Good evening, we will start the Sohegan Cooperative School Board meeting at six oh three. We, you know that Mr. Pease unable to be here tonight, Mr. Vinyu will be on his way in. And hopefully Sunny will be. So we're a little short, but I think we can still have some other discussions we still have for. So, and thank you to, to Steve Chamberlain for sitting in tonight as our superintendent representative. As my kind of prior obligation. Uh, so probably comment, I, if anyone will start off with that, if there's anyone here who would like to speak or. Being answering your here for finance committee, okay? Anyone online by any chance?
There was some online, but no hands raised.
Hands raised? All right, well, he will come back for public input two oh two later on and we'll make sure that everyone has. Input has a chance to speak. Uh, consent agenda, let me just ask, does anyone have any comments about the consent agenda? There's two draft minutes and unidentified revenue of three hundred dollars from the Starkis company for girls soccer. And I say, thank you very much for that donation. Anything that helps our students, we'd greatly appreciate. But anyone have? Right, going one, going twice, I can send you around the papers. Okay, can I have a motion that's consented generally?
It moves.
For longer, maybe a few minutes. Two later number minutes seconds, um, since we're all here, we can just yell those in favor. And that's four and there's nobody else here, so. And we're, I would say we are, it is the most efficient meeting that has ever happened. Oh, for forty five minutes, how several principals report, going into reports received. Dana, would you like to kick off with any, if you want to?
Um. Yep. Uh, no, I'm happy to entertain questions on absolutely anything, I think are the big thing. Uh, we're in the thick of it, as we like to say, so we're rolling with budget, we're rolling for studies work. Um, we, uh, had a very successful fully digital for the first time PSAT administration. Um, and then we also facilitated, we hosted the district wide in-service day at the beginning of October. So we had everybody from the SAU here in conference style, wonderful. Um, I guess one of the things I'd like to clarify is in enrollment. Um. Uh, from nine one to ten one, it looks like a decrease of three, so six ninety five to six ninety two. Um, we had one student move out of district and two that went to homeschool. Those two that went to homeschool, the change actually occurred, I learned, before school started, but it wasn't entered. And so that's why it looks like there was three in that one month, but it was really just that one idea. Yeah. Um, so that's, that's all I have.
Yes. Yeah. We did. Yes, uh, so yes, thank you, the big question on that, I understand, as good as we're over here for about twenty minutes. Yep, that doesn't stay in the emergency, but we were able to.
It was brief practice.
Anyone have questions or comments for Dana? Is there?
It's not too much a principal's report, I appreciate. But the follow up on decisions we made, uh, a couple meetings ago. Asking you, but looking at our space in some nebulous way, just ambiguous, and I was wondering if you should doing any work. What, how you were thinking about approaching that? Um, without a clear directive of what comes, why are you looking at your space and where do you even agree with the space that you invited?
Yeah, um, so if I'm completely honest, it's not a task that we have undertaken thus far in any kind of systematic way. Um, I think the business of school is really the priority. Um. I don't, I think once we start to do our master schedule bill, which actually starts in February. That's piece that we're gonna be really looking at then. Um, seems like a way off from November and February. Uh, so if there's something that's more pressing and urgent, I'm happy to be tasked with something specific. Um, but that's, that's really where I think we are right now.
Great, thanks, and just a little word number, I think it would be a compliment on my security. Oh, get some direction with that, because I've been thinking about that since we. Motion was sort of made in a purely spirit, it's for, perhaps not really hard to instrument, you don't know. What are you looking for, why are you looking for it? So maybe as part of our roles discussion, it could be. A good game, discuss a little bit, so. Um, it's looking for space where they're happy to strike a line. What am I doing, why I'm doing it? I think that's where we're kind of far.
I hear, I hear what you're saying, and I, I think in my mind I was giving her just a little space considering she just became principal. And is working her way through a learning process as well, I could give her a little space to get there, but yeah, we should look at that. Um. And have it.
We have a goal discussion.
Yeah, I could, I could put John saying, we, uh, maybe we can provide some guidance. Along one, but you know, what might, what we might. Look at being very broad about anything that. What particular uses might be, et cetera.
Yeah, well, one of the questions I was actually going to ask were. The comment, uh, I know that again, your principal's important, you're talking about the program studies and looking at offering, new class offerings. Or re-envisioning other classes that already exist. Is there any? Need review or anything that you can say what types of thought processes are you going through, where you're going to use the developing program?
Yeah, so we're, um, we're not, uh, aside from the writing course. Um, I don't, I don't expect us, I mean, I'm not, I can't say for sure because we had, uh, another department meeting. Um, this Wednesday where, where departments were looking at the program setting and offerings. But I, I don't anticipate coming with new course, new course offerings. Um, I think we might see, uh, these updates to the course descriptions. Um, but not new courses themselves, because we really, like, really we're, are focused on. Um, executing what we have with fidelity and, and the effect of our ability. Not adding headcount, keeping FTE where it is, we do know that with, uh, personal buy-ins becoming a requirement. That's also gonna take up time in kids' schedules for elected, so. So I think a lot of, a lot is going to be satisfied as well, and maybe just some re, um. Maybe some better definition of pathways, that's some feedback that we're hearing is. You know, when, when I look in the program studies for math, it's very clear to me the paths that I can take. Um, and folks kind of looking for some guidance in other areas as well, so maybe we'll see that, but in terms of new courses, I'm not.
Especially as the broader is that, which is, you need courses upon the topic. That aren't, you know, well attended, well outdated, or, um. Whatever reason. Change there.
Yeah, so definitely part of what we, part of what we, uh, the work that we do administratively, uh, at this time of year. Uh, for the program studies work is to look at enrollment in classes, so what classes are under enrolled and take that like historical view. Okay, so if I give whoop on the radar, if this class is, is lower enrollment. But what has the enrollment trend been and where do we foresee it going? We did do, um, survey work with students. Two years ago around what classes they were excited about, what was kind of missing from our course offerings, where do they want to go? So that data also plays into looking at things. Uh, so again, little premature to say what might not be running. Uh, also, some of what we like to do is if we know we have the FTEs. You know, keeping them in the program of studies as a choice, as a primary or secondary offering for students. And then making the decision to run or not run courses after we get the requests back.
Always interesting having these conversations with budgets starting now and talking about programs and studies for next year and within the school for two months.
Where we should move the, like, they fuck for. I mean, is it, do you say, do, I mean, if it was a low enrollment, something. And, and, and students still wanted that, but we couldn't offer the class. It's all classing to people, it's just saying. I mean, there's still a pathway, right? We, we have. Well, open period, we have learning comments, we can, we can set them up, guide them to B-Lax, and there's a, a pathway for that student, they're both, even if we don't have a class. Or whatever.
Yeah, so definitely, um, we have done that, we did that one just last year with an AP French class, right? Really, especially with something like an AP French class, AP language class, it's a capstone experience for students. Four years at the school, um, lots of different options for them, you know, tons, but, um. Classic, right, so there's classes, that middle area that we looked into funding for them online, there's B-Lax, there's PLO options, so some of them, yeah.
Yeah, well, yeah. So we have that. Good.
Great, you know, questions? I was saying, you know, German exchange students have been in the school, which is exciting, and I know there'll be the. The students will begin to go there in April, 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 I'm correct? So that's great that that program is starting and is starting again. Um, veteran program is November tenth, I know.
Or nine.
Nine.
And third law school?
Nine.
I'm not seeing offered.
It is.
Well, I think it's.
By the way, I would.
You're looking pretty good.
No, you know, I got to the nine, okay. I think there was, unfortunately can't be here, I tried to.
Yeah, um, I would.
But I appreciate the invite, they got so help.
Yeah, so I shout out to Marie Marilla, and she's a great community partner with the school around this event. Um, so we thank her a lot and John Hope Pat as well. Um, and we're, we're excited this year, we've done a lot of outreach, um, Mr. Pease helped with some outreach in Mount Vernon as well, really. Wanting to welcome veterans and active military personnel from our community to, so we're looking forward to that.
All right, Andy, Thursday. Okay, moving on, uh, facilities report. Any questions there, any comments? Just again, thank you very much to the team here, to, and God, her, to, you know, facilities. Actually, I do have one thing on that, Dana. So I had an interesting conversation with Paris. Um, walking through when you're seeing the trash by the end of the day around. Um, you know, it's a lot for our facilities to ask them to go out and do some of the. You know, just the green areas at times, is it something you can rotate through with libraries, is the community service, like once in a month? I don't know, somehow, like every day, a group goes out and picks up trash. I don't know, it's just a thought, and I thought it was a fascinating thing, and I wanted to bring it up.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea, definitely put out advisories, al- also, Sarah Gillum has been working with our head groundkeeper at that this year. To get a new program off the ground, um, where students are more, more, I mean, they can choose a community service pathway, or they can choose a yellow pathway. Do you want to put it that, um, on, on kind of beautifying Sohegan, really giving back to your all the community? So, um, so that's another, another value that I appreciate that. But yeah, for sure, students are always looking for.
Yeah, and I just think if I have advisories, they can go out in another twenty five minutes and fresh air and walking around and. Uh, a question.
Has the, um, walkthrough for the repeaters happened, all that testing and preliminary work?
So. No, so, um, the cost initially came in higher than expected, so Brian's been working with other vendors. Last I saw, he was having success. So it's not like we're gonna be able to come in with the budget, but he's had to do some additional like work. Soon as that gets gone, I'll be.
Yeah, and, um, it, I'm curious, really curious, but. Maybe walk along with their, whatever they do, just trying to understand some of the technical detail. What's the range, what, what, how does it, you know, um, and maybe by going the, when they're actually here.
Uh, treasures report. Any questions, CJ? I appreciate all your work, um. I'm gonna make a clean, we appreciate that. Uh, the CIP plan, unfortunately Dan's not here, there are questions, it's something we can put out there later when he's here or in a different agenda. Um, but this came in from the town, it was a town, but Amy, are you part of CIP or the, so maybe.
Yeah, I wasn't there at the, the last meeting, like, to put it out together, but, yeah, we, we, um, submit our forms for the school projects. And, and they take a look at our projects, all the town projects and, um, potentially move things around. Um, it's really only more pertinent for the town departments to move their items around, that they certainly will get it behind. Our shift item. Yeah, that's being proposed, and take that into consideration.
Yeah, I, I appreciate receiving the report, Bill, it was really true, which is an idea, you know, that not just the project, the school going through what the projects that the town has planned. Um, and I think it's good forecasting data. So. I don't know if anyone has any questions on that, I don't know if they have yet, very brutal. There's a lot in there, there's a lot.
I mean, I mean, two things notable, like, sorry, I don't like to say one was. Be whatever enters school this year is gonna do with their public situation, is not an error, it's a dollar amount, so you can get recognition for that. And then, yeah, the absolute modus was. You know, it's something that will, but, you know, science, I don't know, whether we might adopt it next, whatever is there, so. So I guess.
Yeah. It's not, it's not a.
They have to come up with everything, but, you know, things are always.
Yeah. Yes. Yeah. Um. All right, so that's all the work information from there. Uh, state grant, Amy.
Yep. Yep, so, um, we got a couple weeks ago, an announcement from Department of Ed that. There was an application for round three of state grant. So we were, um, pleased to find out that information. I think they said there is ten million dollars just that were going to be available. Uh, so they, um, they had the, the application link go live on Monday. Unfortunately, it was a first come, first served. So Roger and I prepared the week before to be ready to, to submit, um. And we actually had to submit separate applications that we didn't have ahead of time, uh, so we just, you know, gathered our data, but. Separate applications by this, by school and by project type. Um, the three categories were access control, emergency alerting, and surveillance. So we worked with, um, um, with administration to develop a list of projects for all of the schools in S D thirty nine. And, uh, they were ready at ten o'clock to, um, to submit those applications. Um, so the portal is open for a month. Uh, so it closes November thirtieth, and then we'll, we'll find out. Any awards, um, the maximum award per school is a hundred thousand dollars. So we submitted for a hundred thousand dollars for each school. Yep, so if we, as, as our typical, typically, we don't discuss specific security items in public, but happy to put them in on the, um. The application.
Right, lovely, yeah. Question, yeah, and did, did we get safe funds around one and two?
We did in round two, um, for the.
Like, there's priority, you kind of got it.
There is.
The one extension to the first come, first served.
Yeah, there is priority if you've had it, they would not look at it that way small, because they had four categories they could submit. Um, so we spread it out into categories, and then they only awarded four access controls, that was the only category that, that was awarded, so. As we know, we probably would have put more in under access control if they didn't help them.
What was the second, so that's.
Emergency alert. Yeah.
Oh, I wonder if repeaters. If they had all heard, I mean, everyone has one of these radio in their head, and you can't get the alert, and you can't make one during distress, and it's. It's very, seemingly would fall under the program paddles.
We did complete the, we, we applied for full allocation. In the area, um, that was, um, not as similar to what you just.
Did you discuss?
So we didn't leave any, any money on.
We didn't leave any money.
At least.
And.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
I appreciate everybody staying on top of that, and nice, and the grants that like be available to, to you, so. Appreciate that. Okay, so we'll, I'm sure we're gonna visit that during non-public thing. Uh, committee update, so I'm just gonna ask, if there's those few of us, are there any particular committee updates?
Wellness update.
Yes.
Little, uh, kind of meeting yesterday. Few notes stuck out in mine, yeah, or my brain that I wrote down, just, um. Been, uh, collecting a Y R F E S data. Um. And, what was Sohegan if I, I'm remembering correctly, goes back in years. So, maybe one of the first bits of data that we're coming back. They decided to talk about it, but wow. That was exciting, um, and another really surprising thing was, um, a lot of our meetings, the voters, you, our, our staff, and. Um, because there's a department, we have a staff that's something about what they need, what they want. From, uh, see. Share some data that came back from our health insurance company. Uh, which is fascinating, a lot of, the one thing that was I didn't have was, there's, um. About eight hundred thousand dollars of potential benefit that would reduce claims. That is going under, unutilized. So. So, you get twenty one, whatever percent guarantee maximum rate, we had eight hundred thousand dollars left, my answer is that rate, that was gonna be less. A hundred percent.
Not a hundred percent less, not a hundred percent agree with you.
I'm gonna change the.
And, and what we, three million or something.
Eight million.
Eight million, so that's ten percent. So twenty one, it was, it was one of the ones for them. So, um, so I guess, well, geez, what's going on there? Um, basically. You made a large thought that it was worth, uh, have her to, to even have it, to, um. Inspire them to, to use that, um, because they. Not only does it help our policy, it helps their careers, if they are changed, everyone's positive now, they're ignoring the expectations of these programs. Um, so that's the work we done there, being able to, I have some jury, so. Leaving out meetings, so, before this is the third, and, uh, was coming out, it's, if I remember correctly. Uh, giving our minimum requirements for our policy obligations. And leading to the schedules in the community that's, kind of how we know what, how many there are, where they're located. So, uh, so, uh, one interesting idea that came up was. We developed a survey, relatively simple, ten questions maybe. Um, what those questions are, uh, but then to broadcast that community-wide, various locations. So that, like, is looking forward to it. And maybe tailor the bottomless, really matters, do those. More, like, more in that development.
Active.
Yes, very good.
Perfect summary, thanks.
Um, confronting maybe policies, Anna, is there anything? I mean, we've been, we, we met. Last week, meeting again next week, meet every other week, we've had a. Great deal of discussion about how often physicals need to be turned in. Um, and I think the recommendation, or just my recollections, we're leaving the very final verdict, or what we have, is just waiting for the nurses to say, yeah, that's why we're good with that. Um, so a lot of discussion, not about so much physicals, but are we requiring them at other stages? How often, if someone leaves the school, and then how does that get enforced? And so can we do more than we're required to do, because that creates additional difficulty. Um, so that's coming up soon, we've had a bunch that we've reviewed as far as, you know, that, that came up in the regular review process that have not, are not getting added. Doing nothing with them, so they're not part of our core policies, but they're not. Um, pending, I had a, an H S B A tutorial today, and so it's the new policy website that I, policies. Uh, but yeah, just kind of check along, nothing. Too exciting, if you on the radar, that we're looking at, um, that needs to. It should be coming up soon, I'm sorry, but.
Is there gonna be a, a grouping of policies that come up to us at some time, or there doesn't seem to be much coming our way, but.
There's not been a lot that actually, I mean, yeah, there's, there was a couple, um. So the last Sohegan meeting, or not, yeah, the last Sohegan board meeting. Um, we talked about a policy, I don't know what it was, but I know on it. It was initially, we all talked about it last year, approved it, it didn't get moved through, so there's a variety of those that just need to get kind of cleaned up like this, this should, needs to be voted on. Um.
We started.
Was one.
Yeah, and we started, we had the tuition.
Yeah, we started, we both know a paramount of the tuition issue, and, and that one is getting kicked back. To the tuition one, our recommendations that it go to each of the boards, because we are set up, we Sohegan. Are set up so that we can collect funds from the.
EFA.
EFA, thank you, as I said, it counts for the state that they get. Um, the other two, the other schools are not, so they have to be set up as EFA funds, they want to charge. And we're going to need to, I, we kind of decided that each of the three boards needs to decide, like, if we have someone who's getting EFA grants. And comes to your school and takes, I don't know, art at Wilkins. Does Amherst want to charge for that? Um. I think it's a little easier at our level, and that's something that we're gonna have to decide too. Um, because we can, you know, we have a policy that says, yes, there's a charge, or we. Well, I mean, there's ways to calculate it, it should be calculated ahead of time, like, what percentage.
Shocking about it.
Where, right, one percentage of the normal tuition is a classwork. And then how does that happen, but the decision was that policy committee really should be looking at that until the individual boards decide what they want to do. Because it might, it might be very different between the different boards, and so trying to. Get something that's uniform, it might not even make sense. So.
Right, appreciate that.
Yep, um, one that I wanna, I wanna discuss a little bit, because I know Amherst School Board had quite a discussion about it, and we've kind of touched on all of this about communication to the public. And I saw that, uh, Amherst, one of the, their school board members posted on Facebook the summary of their meeting, and the person responding to questions that are being asked on there. And I'm just wondering, is there something that we want to go forward, we want a different strategy, we want, because. I'm, I'm a believer that we are, we might be three districts, but we need to have the community be able to access. Information from all three districts in a similar way. And I don't hope we both put ourselves out there on Facebook, or is there, well, and another idea that we have brought up before was using the website, being able to post a summary of our notes. And just say, hey, here's a summary of our meeting, and let's send everybody over there. So I think, um, and I think we talked about this briefly maybe last meeting. Um, because I said, should Sunny and I meet and start posting stuff? Uh. I can do that. Um.
But we can't shut off.
And I say Sunny and I, it's where the communication.
Yeah, because we need to reach Mount Vernon as well.
Right, although, you know, I think they're probably on the same Facebook page. I mean, or Stephen can join the Mount Vernon community Facebook page and share it there as well.
Sunny can.
Uh, or Sunny can.
I think that, wasn't there an S D thirty nine? Maybe they're the.
So there is a Sohegan page. And, and we could, but a school district page, not a school board page, and I think we need to be very careful.
And and we could put a school district page, not a school board page, and I think we need to be very careful that we're not speaking on the Sohegan school page, district page. It should be a Sohegan board comment, not a Sohegan.
But it could be all of that, it could go on the Sohegan page, I would think. As a summary of school board.
Why?
You know, where here, here, you know, here's the, here's an update from your Sohegan School Board Communications Committee.
And and put clearly on that, I think the question is, do we want to even respond to questions or do you want to just put it over there as?
Well, we can't respond as a group.
No, but if one person posts, not one person's the only one responding, anyone else.
We can do that, right.
But where does everyone else, we believe that's where the direction we want.
Yeah, yes. I mean, I would be in favor of trying. I would be in favor of at least trying.
Was that advice from the um. School Board Association to put our communication on the S M E ninety nine website and then post with the link back to that.
Yeah, and look, his, his concern was, uh, one, you can't, if it starts to get. Ugly, you can't shut off conversation, you can't shut off, you know, if people post it, you have to, you have to let it be out there. And I think we should, I think it's okay.
Where the negative coming.
Right as well.
But that same potential exists even just the link that's there.
True, right. True, but I think the, if, if, you know, if we want more. Communication. It's, I mean, it's a little like. Having Dana send me every week a little uh, savory thing. Um, as opposed to me remembering to go to the website and open, and it's been so much more helpful since I've gotten it. Uh. And probably seventy five percent of the time I actually open it and read it and occasionally I don't because it's like two weeks old by the time I get there or something, but. Um, but, you know, I, I see it, I go through it, I'm like, it's great, you know, I'm happy about that. And I wasn't checking it when it was just, where do I go? And I knew it was there, it just wasn't front of mind. Um, so I don't think there would be any downside to particularly around like events that are coming up. You know, this is what deliberative is, here's, you know, the, the, especially those sort of things. Um, having those as opposed, and I, and I think I mentioned this last time, that it probably should come with a disclaimer. That says, please understand that, you know, this is, I'm, you know, I'm putting this forward because I'm a, I'm a member of the Communications Committee. Um, please understand that other school board members cannot comment on this. And my comments will be, you know, limited to directing you places since I can act along on these things.
Yeah.
Um, this is, please don't take this as any school board members. Um, you know, disinterest, our willingness to engage is just that we need to make sure we're following open records laws.
But if we do a bullet point in the meeting summary, which is what they put out there.
Right.
To be actual bullet point.
Right, we had a meeting, we did these things, here's what happened, um, you know. Highlights, what the next meeting is, and then if you want more, here's where the minutes are, or just if you had a packet or whatever.
Oh, thank you, good thinking.
Yeah. I've raised the issue for meeting our first concerns, I don't know where the summary gets, it won't be me's balance, but are, you start to carry. Bringing discussions. At, you know, a little. Your voice can create them to the voice others. Um, but if it was limited to facts like events, okay, I guess, but also decisions. These motions were made and here's how they came out. Um, that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
Maybe uh, highlighting some sensitive topics, but not going into where those sessions necessarily stray. It would be very helpful just publicly, so like there's a, some way you can do it that would be helpful for people. That doesn't, I still respect the individual work and positions, that.
Yeah, I think it would be very much like we, if we talked about, in April, it's a bullet point of summary of the meeting, but certain things, if it was just, you know, past this, we'll do that. Here, you know, the budget is the increase of this period, you know.
Right. Yeah, the budget is pretended and.
Yeah.
Bottom line is that.
Right. Here, 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 and I, here's where you can find a copy. Yeah, and you know, tonight's meeting, I mean, one problem with waiting for their summary, we don't want to wait until the next month's meeting to put out what I presented at this meeting, but. You know, we, we, we accepted and, you know, Sohegan girls talking to you is grateful, we're seeing management generation from start to. Yeah. They're all, they're not ready yet. You know, has anyone seen the, you know, it would have been a nice thing to do with the batting, your batting cage and all of it. Those sort of just, this is what's happening, this is what's.
Yeah.
I mean, I, at this point, I think I'm willing to say we need to give it a try because I, I can say what I saw today was daily received. Um, the question is, do we want to give Anna permission to answer questions like they were starting asking questions about health insurance? Um, with the shared percentage, can we answer the question, or we just say, this is the fact, we will be about responding?
I don't think I would say we're not responding, but I, I think, I would hope that you all would think I could be a. Appropriately diplomatic, I mean, I'm not gonna weigh into a. Budget, I don't buy budget item discussion on my own, you know, I'm probably gonna say, here's the budget, here's a link to the budget information.
Uh, you can watch our discussion.
Yeah, there's a discussion and a presentation online about this, I might even say, you know, if you look at this, at this presentation, the discussion regarding the increase in health insurance is on page forty seven.
Yeah.
Uh. So I, I mean, I'm, I'm only just saying.
Because I'm sharing information.
I mean, I, you know. I, I mean, that one would necessarily be a hard one because, you know, you could say, yes, I'll pay forty nine, it's my one, but it just, it, it. It starts. I mean, if the question is like, is the board going to? Do A, B, C, then I don't think anyone is. You know, like, we've got this whole none of us act individually, I can't just, I can't on my own say, absolutely, you know. Um, I could say, I'll make sure I make a note of this question. And and, you know, bring internal intention or whatever, maybe, you know, or this is where you can go to get that answer for. I mean, I'm not, I'm not anticipating that I'm gonna post something on Facebook in the next forty eight hours, loop to win, responding blow by blow to everything that pops up.
Right, and that, that would be my thing.
I haven't even applied. Um. Right. And, so I mean, I'm willing to say, I think we need to give it a chance, give it a try. Um.
You know, I, the one has the other.
I'll make sure I'll say something like, you know, um. See if I can reach Sunny and if she decides to do it, and she wants to put her name on it too, I'll do that, but if not, I'll say I'm reaching out.
Then hopefully she can copy.
On behalf of the Communications Committee, we're trying to make this, this is my summary of the things, of some of the things that have been going on recently where you can find more information. And then go to the store. Okay.
All right. I. I think I just look very slow responding, I, it's not that it's a lack of view, person, you know, it's just whoever's in that job. Boy. It's gonna be a hell of a lot easier if. The disclaimer at the beginning and then a statement at the end, if you have any reaction that you want to pass to the board about this thing, the email address.
I think that's a better.
That's, I mean, we receive public comment. We could, we had someone or a call somewhere that we would kind of respond in time to those in a meaningful way. And this is just another thing in my, in my mind as a public comment that we could receive. Is it passing administration with effort, if it, where is it in the larger discussion, how it bad come in, so on and so forth. Be it to be a. Okay, responsive way and responsible way to do it as opposed to, I mean, it wouldn't take. Much to do.
Okay, so I think I have an issue with that, my thing is, I, I have no idea would that be the plan to follow. I just, I guess I would like the discretion if I think things are completely getting off the rails. You know, like, like, we've gone down this, you know, like, no, 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 that is just not right, you just have to go look here. Like, here's a digital resource that answers that question. I think saying something like that is absolutely fair. Instead of just, I guess, and that's what I think of, I think of, you're right, instead of just letting a bunch of misinformation stay on what is now my post, right? Um. You know, I'd like to at least be able to, should that come up, say, look, this is where you go, or this is, you know, no, I think, I think maybe you're misunderstanding, here's where you can find more. And I'm not saying that would be every post or every time or everything. But I would like the ability to do that at my discretion.
Right, the error certainly seems to be.
Yeah, I, I'm willing to say, let's, let's give this a try and, you know, yeah, we'll revisit it each month and see how it's going and see if there's a struggle and we can revise or rescind the. Go ahead, that make sense?
Yeah.
Able to try. I think we need to try, especially with budget people, it's a good time.
Yes.
Absolutely.
All right, try to grab something come this weekend.
Appreciate that conversation quite a bit, we'll revisit that, we get it on the forums.
Yeah. Yes, you had a question for Dana, the question was, how long does it usually take you to, uh, like. Lose the minutes or most important for this, the, the motions and how they pan out.
Um. Usually I have to go back and sometimes watch the video and sometimes motions are a little.
Squishy.
Squishy.
We could do a better job of writing.
It happens, that's all right.
Precise words down on a piece of paper, um, somebody reads it, says, this is the words, and for Anna, then you have it in real time. And Sunny, you can have it in real time and not. Putting that to burn on the day, she can do it her own, in fact, we should give a copy of that paper to Dana.
I do think so, that I've seen what I'm put out and I think it's more than what I put in my summary.
Yeah.
You know, I, I mean. I try not to put twenty pages of minutes, but I try to keep them concise and try to balance between. Detail in the summary and detail in the minutes.
Okay, right.
But I think he adds a little bit more in the summary.
He does, he does, I was just thinking about the, when I, when I saw the post from on Facebook from. Amherst, one of the Amherst School Board members, it was kind of like that bullet point here, so there is motions here, but I always say, let's just go ahead and let's give it, let's see. And because there's stuff that, I mean, there's stuff that's not. My opinion. That I share that's not necessarily even gonna be in the next, I mean, one, we're not gonna share the vote on the session. You know, as long as a motion taken, a set agenda impacts, I mean, that, you know, I assume we're not sharing votes on things that are assumed against. Yeah. Um, but two, it would be good to go through the principal's report and like, and right, and feel positive for making it to the semifinal. Um. You know, I don't know.
Donation maybe the.
The donation, right, the mention that we just finished posting the uh, exchange shoots from Germany. And, you know, that's. But I can just, I can just take the agenda and pull out some of that information and say, just look, here's a little update. Yeah, I, I, I'd say go forward. At each meeting, if you all have, if someone comes in with something that they really want to make sure I include, I don't know. You know, like Dan might know something about a hockey game that I didn't know about, it was particularly impressive, and if he wants me to put that in, just tell me and I can put that in.
All right, thank you, we'll revisit communication at that, but we won't have to, we're just talking about it at that point. So um. I'm just gonna go over to Community Council for another day, Andy.
Hello. So, since our past public board meeting, uh, we have been discussing our referendum proposal that was brought forward by Case and Fox. Um, the only amendment that has been put into effect. Um, is that this proposal, instead of taking effect immediately, would be um, taking effect once forums are actually in place. Um, so basically just a review on what the referendum proposal is. Um, it would be another tool, um, like how you would say motion to vote, you would say motion to hold a referendum. It would be a simple majority vote for Community Council as to whether or not we would hold a referendum vote. Um, once it would pass to have a referendum vote, uh, the vote would move to advisories with a one-week voting timeframe. Um, it would require two-thirds of the majority of advisories um, to pass. And then the only concerns or concerns that have been expressed. Um, are concerns about disenfranchising staff, community and, and school board members. Um, concerns about council losing its purpose, and then um, the only other thing that I've really heard is that there's nothing stopping us from holding a referendum vote as is. Um, we don't technically need to put it into our bylaws, but it is the tool that is being worked on, to be fair. Um, are there any questions about referendum?
When you say it requires two-thirds of the advisory?
Yes.
Is it voted on, I mean, is that like two-thirds of the total student population? Or is it like, I was wondering, there's fourteen advisors, one.
Nine, sixteen for grade.
Okay, yeah, so that's, yeah, that's me, just seniors, okay, so, so we have, there are sixty advisories. I mean, like, the, each advisory counts as one vote?
Yes.
For the two-thirds purpose?
As it stands.
Okay. It is a question.
Yeah, yeah, there is, there is concern being brought forward about if, if things go to referendum, you have to look at. What Community Council oversees the public about the symbol. If there are choices that are being made to be sent as a referendum. You've taken the community voice out, the faculty voice out, the administrative, I think the school board voice out in that vote. And that is where one of the big concerns is.
Well, would it be, I have a question about that. Would it be outcome, the referendum passes?
If a referendum passes, it would basically be the same outcome as um, if a, if it will have a community council based on the new council.
Well, that, that's their concern. So, so. I like the idea of. Holding the students to see what they think about it. Here are the concept proposals, using the referendum, learning all that, that'd be great. It's a little odd that you would count, the advisory as a vote, it's supposed to be individual speakers' votes. What believe, says what believe you need in mutual paths. You'd be all over the map with an advisory, and an advisory split fifty fifty for fifty one forty and fifty one forty nine.
Share a man of advisories.
No, I mean.
I absolutely.
It just seems odd to me, that's a.
And that was where the amendment.
Yeah, I absolutely see where you're coming from on that, and that's been a little bit of a controversial topic. There was amendment that was brought forward that unfortunately did not pass, that would state that each student would have a vote rather than each advisory.
Right.
Um, I think the amendment that was brought forward would also include um, staff. Community council, community members and school board members.
Okay, if you wanted, I think the final amendment was about using it, using the advisories as a guiding tool for community council to actually vote. He was trying to change the proposal instead of that being the final vote. That it's just a way for community council to control the school, but community council is still going on it. That was, he was trying to change through an amendment, but that did not pass, so it's back to the original proposal. Yeah, so there's more discussion that's gonna be had next week.
Yes.
In the evening.
Week six.
What was the reasoning?
I do want to thank you really, what's the other one? So I was just gonna say, I think, I think um. I think the administrative view of this, it, we share a lot of the concerns that are being expressed, but I think it's really important for us to help. Everyone understand what's, I think, what I have understood to be the underpinning and the intent of this proposal, which is to increase. Participation among the student body in its government, right? Um, and so really, it's one, it, it, I think, I think the driving factor is trying to. Get. You know, we shared, say for spotlight, here's what council's working on, or we shared, here's what council's working on, but everyone isn't talking about it all the time. And I think the goal is really to get students more involved in kind of their government, and I think that's a really worthy goal. I'm not sure that this is the way to achieve that goal necessarily, I think there might be some other ways that we can do it. But I think that it's really important that we try to understand what's really at the heart of it.
Yeah, because you're just, that's a lot of that, you know, you just get a vacuum, Community Council was in its quarters, coming up with a proposal that had its product, boom. We want to send this referendum fifty percent, now it goes off the referendum, uh, to the referendum.
Unfortunately, it's still unofficial. Uh, we do expect to have that in November. And so we'll have the official numbers for the public hearing at the end of November. Uh, the only other changes that were made made to reclassify um some items, so technology equipment replacement. Uh, went from a curriculum account to a technology account just to make things more clear. And there were some administrative functions that were in student services that really are more administrative. So we moved those um to administration as opposed to student services. As these costs are not included in the default, um and they're more administrative in nature, but they did not change the overall budget. So the monetary changes um and from draft one to draft two is actually a reduction of eleven thousand five hundred sixty seven. So this is the um similar slide that was presented uh for draft one. And we just break down um the budget by the eight categories to be able to uh provide a more manageable way to analyze the changes. Transportation, um still the biggest change primarily due to um the increase in special education. Uh, we've entered a new contract this year based on increased costs and expected to be that it's going up. Curriculum, this is where the salary benefits for most staff will show up. Um, including the additional staff being proposed as well as uh increases in insurance. Instructional supply, replacement furniture and the CTE program uh improvement that is proposed. Athletics, there's some increases due to the cost of officials uniforms replacement on added items. I'm just giving a brief summary. We did throw all of this in front of the last draft. Uh, facilities, this budget includes utility maintenance costs repairs for better maintenance. Uh, most of the increase in this budget is due to the uh insurance increase. Food service has a modest increase. Um, as a reminder, the goal is to fully offset this budget by revenue. Um, admin shows a reduction, uh mostly due to staffing changes resulting with salary or benefit savings. Uh, reduction in special ed, legal service costs and um medicated that are too costly. Technology, um yeah, um that this changed because we moved the um the what was in curriculum to technology. So it was a little bit different than uh than draft. And student services, we have um some significant reduction due to staffing decreases. As well as a net reduction in related student services, so with that in consideration. So this is the default calculation. Um, as a reminder, the more articles are removed from the FY twenty four adopted budget. And contractual obligation either increases or decreases are applied. And this year, the total change is forty five thousand five hundred ninety-four dollars in this draft. Uh, for contractual salaries and benefits, the increase is relatively small at thirty five thousand five thirty-one. So even with the increase in health and dental combination of PBC salaries at status quo. And the reduction in student services positions balanced out this line. Non-salary benefit and benefit um student services decreased as we looked to align resources with student needs. Uh, special ed transportation is a big increase, pay on contract and required routes. And again, the decrease and yet the USF is applied. Um, and the net change is an increase of forty five thousand five hundred ninety-four. So the proposed budget calculation, the difference between the FY twenty five default and FY twenty five budget. Are the items that are typically deemed to be at risk of not having funds available. And in this draft, the total amount is one ninety-three six fifty-three. So curriculum is where you find the business teacher, the learning commons tutor, safer flex classroom assistant. As well as instructional supply, CTE program costs. Um, there are projected savings and salaries and related benefit lines that offset. The proposed increases for these positions, which is why you don't see the full cost of these new additions. In the difference between the default calculation and proposed budget. Um, technology includes non-union health and dental increases that are not included in the default as well as some supplies. Athletics includes uh a lot of the items that I spoke about previously, uh uniforms, but then replacement, uh these are not contractual. Um, facility, there's not the modest increase in property liability, uh summer health and software. Food service, this change is just the non-union salary and benefit increase that is not included in the default. Transportation is actually a reduction in the regular school to home bus contract. Because the default is based on the FY twenty four voted budget, which was for seventeen buses. And proposing sixteen buses for FY twenty-five. Um, there is an increase in CTE transportation, so that um does help to offset that decrease as well. So this and the other changes to athletic transportation, that's a small increase of one thousand two hundred and sixty-one. Administration is a net reduction of thirty five thousand fifty-one primarily for administrator salary savings from uh hiring. Um, and there are, as I said, the overall projected savings of twenty-five proposed budget from hiring. Now we'll take a look at the reserves. So there are currently five funds that are established for the sub-teen cooperative school district. The maintenance, school maintenance fund, um is there to fund ongoing capital expenditures. And our director of facilities revised the capital needs plan last year. It was approved by the board. And this is a request of three hundred um fifty-five thousand. And the board will need to determine the funding source. Um, this administration is currently recommending a compromise on fund balance. The term field is um a request of seventy thousand. Uh, and this is a continuance of um of the plan that has been provided to the board. The technology fund was created last year and is based on the prior technology plan. Um, that is included in the budget file and this request is for fifty thousand dollars to finance that fund balance. Uh, for this draft two, we have a new fund that we're proposing. Um, it's a vehicle fund for vehicle replacement and other related costs. So the use of the vans for student services and athletic has increased. And as a way to ensure that we maintain working vehicles and replacement as needed. We're recommending this fund for consideration, also to be funded from other side of fund balance. And student services, we are and the unfunded liabilities fund, we're not recommend not recommending an additional um deposit to those ones.
Any kind of, yeah, vehicle fund, yes, just build up a fund to replace a vehicle when you need it.
For, yeah. Yeah. Yep. So I don't think I had the final one presentation, so I added it in. I know something the board likes to present it, whatever it is. So um as a reminder, the details of the long-term facility project funding plan is provided here. Um, I I have a little bit of news on Skylight project, so we're expecting the architectural plan for phase one. Of the Skylight replacing project by summer one. Uh, we'll still need to cost it out and determine whether we have sufficient funds for the planned furniture replacement. Yeah, alright. We're working on it. Uh, we likely won't know about this until after the first of the year. Phase two of the project is planned for next year. Although we want to keep the project on track and are looking to combine phase one and the phase two. So as a recap, um including the added request for funds. From FY twenty-four unassigned fund balance, the total appropriations are shown on this slide. The budget and the four fund requests for capital reserves, the term technology fund and the new vehicle fund. And then finally, this is our budget review process. Um, please next step. On this slide, so far advisory finance touched that twice and we've had all of our sub-teen meetings. Um, so we're here tonight for draft two and I believe advisory finance is again next week.
It's like it's the eighth.
You have the sixth.
Oh, you're ready to change. There you go. Yeah.
Um, yeah, thank you, Jeanie. Yeah, we we had a request to move that. Um, I'm. Any good, no? Um, Jeanie, if you want to come forward and get a finance committee update before we go and ask any any questions, if there's any final questions or about the draft two budget, but I thought it might be helpful here from finance to sure.
The budget.
The budget.
I'm George.
This would be here?
Yeah.
Two lights off.
Yeah, yeah. They got support same with you.
No, that's fine. Okay. I was trying to turn the work off as opposed to like maybe I didn't realize that we had like a place of burned out lights and it's more. Jeanie's kind of in the dark.
Hey, um. Yes, uh, just to to recap, uh, we did meet, I think it was October twenty-fourth and we shared out all of our function reports. My recollection is that um it wasn't anything that stood out um in terms of uh concerns. Um, we felt like everything was justified at this point. Um, I didn't check, um, see if everybody's questions had been answered. So maybe you can tell me, Amy, I'm not sure.
We're we're fortunate in that um Amy um attends all of our meetings, so um and usually school board representatives. So we are very lucky and we can get our questions answered on the spot, which helps a great deal.
They're all concerned.
Everything's, yeah, okay, all of our questions have been answered. Um, so what we'll do then is meet on the eighth of November um to um to update um based on the information tonight. Um, I'm not sure if it would change anything significantly, um a few things here and there. But we also had a question about the um the SNU budget because it's obviously a piece of I think it's a budget. And so we've asked uh Mike Berry to come and explain what the justification is for a couple of changes. And he, so we're having our meeting at five thirty to give him a chance to um to give us a few minutes before he has to go to his listening session. But that would be, that's one of the reasons we changed it to the eighth and the others haven't been up here. Glad to see that we do that. And um I think that's that is for finance.
Yeah, thank you very much. Um, any further questions about budget or anything to the finance business here?
Sure. You said um PDC was instead of SAV. Forty, to understand that.
Yeah, so they're in negotiation.
Right.
So there's no salaries that are projected for um members of the.
So assuming that PDC agreement goes, that'll be something.
Yep. Alright, that's supposed to be the technical term.
Yeah, yeah. The uh, she's talking about the costs for some of the closing thing merger and CTE. Along with things there. But you'll always decide. So they're offset by um something now.
So the, oh, yeah, so the um, I think that was when I was talking about the default. Yeah, that was the.
Was the slide where thirty-five thousand um. I don't know, was it this slide? It's the wrong movie. Uh. And it's just like thirty-five thousand.
The default.
Yep.
Yep.
Hey. Well, no, that might might have that.
Yeah, I think.
Might have a little.
Yep.
Yeah, that was it.
Yeah.
Proposed budget.
So so you see, so this is the difference between the default and the proposed.
Right.
So these are items that are potentially at risk because they're not in the fault. So, um, because, so the curriculum line is a hundred and forty-eight thousand eight hundred and eighteen dollars. The reason you don't see the full amount of the proposed new staff. New people just because there are reductions in salaries. From the default to the proposed. So in some cases, the default is higher than the proposed. So if you were, if you were going to um add those new additions, they would cost.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if you were gonna add those positions, it's gonna need a couple hundred thousand dollars to do that. So because of the of the hiring that has been done, because of how close this budget is to the default. You 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 wouldn't hire, you wouldn't include those because you said you weren't going to, but you would potentially have the money.
In the default because the old salaries are in default and the new rejected salary are.
Yeah.
Same.
Yeah. Because the default isn't a budget, it's just calculated, so it's it's up and down.
Definitely defined.
Yeah.
Completely defined out.
Yeah, yeah.
It hasn't just been believed.
Yeah, sorry.
Really, it's just a number.
Yeah.
It's a monetary number that's created, but it has no, we'll have to revise it. Kind of mentioned, but.
Right, anyway, when when this budget did pass two years ago. It was worked on as we recommended default because in that case there were things that we we had to pay or we had to pay for buses. But they weren't included, the increase wasn't included. Well, in this case, it's actually opposite because the the voted budget, which is what the default is based on, is at seventeen buses. And we're only proposing sixty. So this is, this presentation has been to be extremely transparent and have all of the information out there. So I'm just giving you all.
So the default, kind of the same logic, the default has a set plus that. The proposed has the station.
Right.
That's another example.
Or less, actually, but the proposed is less.
Right, okay. Yeah, um, you know, and those sixteen buses, that's definitely why, right? Yeah, this is what a four A and a bar must be around.
Now, we did add the CTE transportation, so that's not in the fault. That right? So that could potentially fall out.
Typically, it's not really how that falls out, it's what you probably would expect.
Right, because we had an increase in that population attending programs. And it would be really helpful if you could provide transportation. Whatever has with that.
And it would be families from part of the community, or is that being?
Could are not.
And if you're around, I would be glad we don't have these sessions. Vehicle screen. We will find we have to finish. Uh, we're gonna talk about that in a minute. Oh. No, uh, projected numbers, uh, it's gonna be corrupted for your kids. And so we uh we'd like, we're gonna talk about getting another van and things like that. That's how they change it. Yeah. I mean, I.
Anyone else have questions? Okay, go for it.
Okay, um, a couple of years ago, we thought about, had it a while, and we think that's true now. With somebody who's best and supporting A and D, which is these. Are we doing the things for students on both parts of the evening, running the tests there? Any lessons in um PSAP and SAP? Uh, we do offer an SAP here. Uh, in a pause, in the PAP, it's kind of straight.
So that was put in the budget, it's not the tax.
Right, oh, oh, yeah, okay, yeah.
We currently pay for the eleven grade SAT and the eleven grade PSAT. And a ten grade, you pay in the ten grade for the SAT. So it's just in A team, don't want like this, we do not have.
We're not supporting that.
At least we do.
But I mean, there are ways to live those because we don't universally systematically be to have the options for families to reach out and. They need.
To the dual enrollment version? Wait, the other thing is if the dual enrollment, you got, what, you get two STEM courses or something, then it's just paid for by the state.
Exactly, I don't know.
You men, you men, you were asking about A P.
And you, no, 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 dual enrollment, pay the the college to.
No, no, the state actually pays.
The state will pay for two STEM courses.
Yes, well, they're two, so they're free.
So it's only above that, we start every year.
But the A P courses are our staff.
Correct.
Right, I'm just saying for those, I'm just saying that there are those, that is a partial.
And the move, again, that's dual enrollment, it's not A.
Right, the A P S B is where it's at.
Right.
That I lost on our radar. Probably the study. I'm I'm wondering if we should invest that in the two. Um, and then just a couple of just clarify. clarify, but the maintenance fund, we know that's limited maintenance, but also broad enough to be capital. It is broad enough.
Broad, yeah, I understand, yeah, I think it's capital maintenance, but it is the new capital.
So much of it.
Yeah.
Well, arguably, that's maintenance that's existing. New would be building a something new, you know what I mean? Building something that is maybe new, an improvement.
So, yeah, I can go back and ask you a question. I know there were two funds and one, they got rid of and rolled into the one, so it was a rotation, yeah. I I feel like I remember that it's pretty expensive.
It was a C I T document, talked about it, it would manage everything.
Yeah.
And I think that's something on that.
Before the end of the year, I can fund that.
And then the last question is, the vehicle fund is, that's, you said, maybe I should for replacement of the vehicle, you're not, you're not using it to buy new vehicles and or.
So with that wording, this vehicle fund is going to be afforded to you.
You either.
I was talking, did it pass by, it would be a replacement, that was the more article that was, we couldn't buy. So we wanted to be more flexibility, but yeah, it's the projected twenty thousand dollars is projected to replace the current fleet. Not even one, we're talking about in minutes.
Right.
Just the current, over, you know, in ten years. Because the fleet didn't, didn't, I mean, it was built to be, compared to other.
We we have current. And how many are special ed related? Are there?
Two.
They were, they were.
One small.
Purchased by special.
Right, one, eight passenger, one and twelve are special ed, one twelve is by the CTE. And then the other vehicle. I remember the, yeah, that's the I two twenty.
Well, that's the, that's the truck.
Yeah, that's not the student, and probably not the I two twenty.
Okay, so there are only some.
We have three for students and one for me.
Correct.
I I have to totally go, it's probably, what what is our ideal number of student vehicles?
Um, we're gonna propose one additional twelve thousand for now.
That's on your agenda, yeah.
No, I don't, I just.
Yeah.
Uh, I guess why why it's relevant here is I'm just wondering why they asked for the vehicle maintenance on this twenty and not six thousand for anyone. In person, this is. Uh, that's what, that's how I'm finding it, I.
Very simple, we're gonna, it's gonna say, you're gonna buy that a fund balance, it's supposed to put money in fund balance and catch it.
Well, the first, the vehicle you're you're performing a proposed tonight is gonna be coming out of fund balance, so it's quite built up a.
Year, correct.
But build up the capital.
Just to talk about, you, you, it's all of you, but yeah, that's.
I'm just, I'm just.
That's our proposal.
And when I say, okay, okay, I understand you, not okay, I agree.
Yeah.
I disagree with you either, I'm just.
No, we started the process, this is just recommended, custom board very much, Mike, did I talk about? Custom board.
And then I I boom, what they came in. This, I like the the uh categories, it sounds very helpful, we don't know for a long time. Um, I mean, I can't remember if this was gonna be really presentation, but if we see a, like, for the proposed, I will, that's the combination, well, I was saying, like, okay, the C P investment we're making is this dollar in this twenty category. The other proposed thing we wanted is this, and here's the cost of that. We broke out my projects, posed it to the portion categories.
So I would need to know which projects we're talking about.
Um, I guess all projects that are being proposed.
But.
I I don't know how many projects that is, I guess that's part of my problem, I don't we don't have, it's hard to see what the projects are, maybe that's where I'm getting.
The definition of project.
Uh, well, proposed C P E something that's, creation, maybe something else, I'm not sure. Um, furniture was one. That's replaced, that's not a proposed project. I think it is.
We're on that. That, that's been so an ongoing issue because sometimes the money enters. Yeah, like it's been in the budget before and the money got used for something else that came up. So we were putting in the capital maintenance, trying to try and use for that. And we're hoping to use that for that, but we're, now we're finding the skylights are more expensive, so now like we have to prioritize again. So replacing that furniture is not a project.
Okay, we're gonna make that. This is, we're in giving a low.
Well, I think you're trying to create, don't, don't think that there are projects.
I think it's hard to events others, uh, I don't need new people here, we.
Us, we have.
Well, we have to convince ourselves and then with our obligations, our duties, we go out and voters. To name it supported, um, that this is worthwhile and it's hard to talk about it without say, okay, we want to invest in C P program. And you know what we're doing, it's the cost of this, I'm using that one example to keep in my head. But there are other projects, following the project, for lack of a better word, that are that are in the proposed budget. And I can't articulate what those are about, neither very well. So.
And it might be investments, projects, investment.
More about the people, so are you talking about like the learning problems, like those that.
Right, there's not a lot of, of, you know, right, I agree with you, so that one of the, one of the investments is is moving from a brand to that, providing a tutor for the learning. One is inviting classroom assistants to take out.
Right, and they, you know, the distance each are higher.
And the business people pay on this.
Right, so that, the problem is, and we can do that, but the cost for all of those things is gonna be more than a hundred and ninety-three thousand five hundred and fifty-three dollars.
Right.
Because there's savings elsewhere.
Right.
So I think you're gonna wanna talk about how to present that, that publicly.
Yeah, because in year two, those costs are gonna realize. And in year three.
Yeah.
So I think people need to know that the cost of those efforts now is relative to what of what a default budget kind of condition is, but the total cost of the project actually is like this. I mean, we don't talk to our constituents in that way, I think we risk um losing those support.
We have the cost for the three institutions and the cost for CTE. I don't know if there's anything else that I would necessarily pull out if you could up here. I mean, it's a lot of us examples, like over six thousand of them, so we don't need to like. What's the issue, if you're thinking of it, you can't.
Well, it's, it's definitely in reference program, in program, programming, I think, part, clearly within that. There's, if there's, hey, we need a new piece of furniture, it's no proposed, I guess I'm a little less concerned about that, one tiny expense. These investments in the program and staffing are long-term. Maybe we could look at it like that, something that's gonna recurring cost over year over year that's going to realize itself in year two. Is what I really should learn how to speak about and in my own mind, think about, and then also be able to communicate. Realize itself in year two, is what I really should learn how to speak about in, in my own mind, think about, and then also be able to be engaged outwardly.
So I get, yeah, you know what it is, is that I think, I guess that with the community finance committee, sitting on things, I, I will quantify that in my head. Maybe I need to put together something, maybe that would with you, that puts together some of that stuff in a verbiage that we can then discuss that the chairman understands.
Yeah, that would be great, because, you know, we're just, we're here now to say at the time, we had one month in scrap line. We have an access to discuss what our feedback is from direct. So this is my feedback, and I'm trying to figure out what I, how I need to know, where my brain is working right, when I'm connecting so much with the slot, I mean, I understand what it's. I'm not seeing where these investments in, in our, for example, we can be for this program and C P E program is. Highlighted, it's channel investment. Get that over.
I, I think it's just because of.
Maybe that's part of the, of the discussion, and when you're in a conversation with somebody, and I'll, you know, I'd probably give them. You can, you can explain that, but I don't feel equipped to do that.
I think I understand, you can have a project based budget, it's not what you. You can break every little piece of what you do about it. Component costs, but you're talking about like the D P, the psychology, the positive, the learning positive. Come on, add a, uh, C P E program, that's what I was, for the other programs, much transportation costs, that kind of.
Yeah, all, I'm, all in, we wanna make an investment in C P D, right? And it's, we're putting this much money, we're hoping to get this much out, this is why, this value proposition. This is how we're serving students, it doesn't, you know. All of those types of design, we have to be able to, was that enough, or are they to be able to personally support it? Right, you can't go do that with curriculum and technology, I don't know where all the little pieces are that make that work. Same thing with, yeah, I think maybe some of you expressed it maybe better than I, even words are harder, like project, but yeah. The best one for making the learning time space, the best one for making the business, I already, okay, the best.
I, I think I, I know what you're getting, yeah, I'm trying.
And I needed some things, I had specifically said that, get that model, and if the added to that.
Are you asking particularly about what's new or growing or addition, or are you asking them to take. Entire budget and re categorize it into different, not different, no, no. What is like the full enrollment on C T E, not a case, what is it here, what is it here?
Not in terms of the budget lines, how it's working in the business, that is by then, I can think, and the finance advisor and everybody reviewing that, they, they all understand what.
I was gonna say, like, because when you look at like technology, we've got a really, really, really detailed breakdown from technology on what that all.
No, how often in turn, because Jonathan, I found out these initiatives that are in this budget, they're helping you create this budget, you wanna see how it quantifies. Either as a cost or a savings, you know, whatever you're doing.
New initiative. Not like every teacher that we have, but what's changing.
Right, we're proposing, when, when, when the, you know, when the. When the budget was first presented, you're gonna make an investment in the C P E program. Okay, I wanted to show me, where is that, where is, where is all that, what's the number of that, what, how much is that gonna cost in year two? What, you know what I mean, we're gonna make an investment in our business, um, courses, in our business curriculum, okay? That's a, that's a new headcount, that's a new, something or other, all about, so what does that, we're gonna make an investment in the learning commons.
I just wanna make sure, yeah, I was, it was unclear to me.
Okay. Apologies for not articulating that well, but that's where I'm, that's what I made. That's what I personally need, I think it's be able to speak to you, but. Thanks.
Um, one thing, uh, you know, I just wanna ask, and we need to clarify and decide which direction we wanna get up, so we're talking about, um. Salaries, so we have teachers that retire, now we put them, put a replacement teacher in the budget. At what we believe the type of teaching we're going to hire, that's sort of possible, math, science might come in a little more experienced, and maybe, uh. Get ninth grade English teacher, or something, you know, who knows, it's like, you guys are the experts, you place them on the salary table. When we go to do default budget, we are putting back in the salary for the teacher that's retired. Yeah. Now, that's something that we receive guidance on from. Our attorney, my attorney, it's something we've done for years, something. As common practice has come up in very, very, many, many, many questions around town over the past year. So you don't wanna be clear to everybody, this is what we are doing, and that, that makes your salaries higher in default. On, well, so now some teachers that are retiring, you know, each year might be three, one year, four another year, five another year, um. I just wanna make sure, be very clear with everybody, that's what it looks like. And.
I think that's the A P's point on the curriculum being one forty, the, the total cost of the headcount, the three to people, the quarter people is higher than that. But it's offset against defaults that are higher than we'll actually be. So it, it washes out to the spend of lower.
The, the default calculation is.
Based on the F Y twenty four.
Okay, right, right, and the, and the opinion that was received from attorneys is this is the way it's supposed to be interpreted. So that's why it's been done, so the question is, I just wanna make sure everyone is very clear on that, and is there a conversation of what they have about that, I just. Wanna put that out there, and not all be on the same place, yeah, I'm sorry.
And I can do a calculation of those retirees, what they would cost. If they were to stay for this, for this year, and I don't think it's gonna be as much.
Yeah, that's what I wanted.
I did it just a quick, and I'm not prepared to present it, but I, well, the mission is going, and I did look, and some, uh, some staff are. Someone who was very experienced, and then things that I've got the same, someone else is in a silly position, that's gonna be funded around the same. Some people are retiring, have like single or two person health insurance, it's like the budget, family, so. I will do that calculation, I don't think it's gonna be a huge difference.
I just definitely appreciate the calculation.
But there is a difference because the people in F Y twenty four might not be here now also, so there's those changes. So people who were, who were hired for this year.
It's fine to change the decision to be three or five. After you move a position that's being, like, correct, you don't have to. But it's either being.
Reclassified.
Reclassified, if you reclassified in the course, don't let it change it.
But if it's eliminated, you're gonna, you don't can.
It sound like with the learning commons. And, um, that was safer advice. We're redefining positions. I don't think those were the.
Because they're new positions. You really do try to follow the rules.
Page from that, what was on, yeah.
In my life, if you're redefining, reassigning that money. Within the budgets, I, I don't feel obligated to.
So the.
Do so.
The learning commons, uh, was a, uh, I'm right. So.
It wasn't.
It wasn't.
But as long as we're clear, th- this money is, will be included in the department, we have a pass for it, here, but. Money that are, that are there, it's, we're using it to manage schools. Maximize the.
So let the teacher's salary. Change.
Right, that's what I mean, is, is being utilized properly.
The headcount.
It's not just the plus of the default, you know, it's, it's there in the investment.
And, and when we do have a pocket, um, to, to fall, like, we go to the fall, have a block, and we, the board approves that new money. It's not like we do, so they approve it, and if you go off block, if you're done, the board proves that. Like, if we add a position outside the budget, doing enrollment like we did with, um, business, it comes here. And so this is all transparent, all included, and the board is elected to make these decisions, you can transfer, you can allocate resources, and now your discussion is public by the day. The process that you, and, and I talk a lot about. I don't think, I think it's disingenuous to say, you know, that we're, we're not hiring people all the time at master's degree, or C, or E C thirty. And he's, you know what I mean, I mean, um, we, we don't artificially pay the, um, proposed budget. Because we cut stuff, like Mike said, you know, you don't want to, um, have money in a budget you don't need when we're cutting things you do. That's the struggle, like, in this weekend, so. You know, so, um, that's why it's real, it's real, that's why we believe, and we've been, I mean, the numbers, we, even though we've, we've saved money in hiring. Even in this market, where we've hired some people, we've still overall been able to attract some experience and teachers at all three levels that we like. Beginning, middle, and sometimes you have to go out.
I just say that I, I believe in that, and I support, thank you for that, but please don't take my, none of these as criticism or malware. You know, what I would say to a person on the street who's asking me questions, is we're making investment that's nine months from now. Or just ask, look at the answer. So, you know, we could have fifteen more kids show up tomorrow, and maybe.
Hey, it's.
All these questions, I mean, you just never know with. Right, so. You know. I wouldn't get so bad out of shape or. You know, like, okay. He's reasonable overall, and I made that argument, but I can understand why someone would look at the way we're doing, it's good, and. You know you're talking, it's gonna be this, so why don't you, but it in there, well, we know that we're talking about, I'm gonna be reduced, it's like, you know, retirement employees, you're hiring. You're reading your answer, it's not you, the answer is, because it all allows us to do that, that may not be very satisfactory to some people.
It hasn't been.
I don't, I, I know that.
Oh, wait, and we know there are other costs are gonna be higher than what we're allowed to have in A P hall.
Well.
So we can't, I mean, you can't only reduce, and you can't increase.
That's the struggle, I mean, that was the answer that I did about eighteen ways and means last year. Is that if you simply reduce everywhere, you will not have enough money, funds, we don't wanna do a deficit appropriation. That we, we're gonna have to do, right, we're gonna have, and we actually tried in our legislative hearing this year, tried to take a look at some of the costs, like transportation. And some other costs, money for the child and these things, um, but I think. They designed this law that way, so schools could operate.
As is. The way it's, and there is. The one is, the other one, anyone is not.
Only, but, only what's been approved in the last, last year.
And we made that clear with the match, you're probably.
Done what we said we were gonna do, this board and this administration, done what it said it was going to, it may look like, but at least we did.
Could you, um, could you, uh, please, I just need to get a recent help. Sure, it might be helpful to see what would this budget have looked like if the healthy current screening was more in line with the pandemic last couple of years. Whatever, it's like five percent, six percent, whatever.
Or either.
Well, if you did consider what the place.
You'd be a negative budget.
That's the slide that maybe.
Yeah, Amy figured out at the very beginning.
Yeah, I, I had the total now, I didn't have like what it, maybe in the differential, but. Yeah, that's.
I think you're right.
That could be really good information for us to see.
The story is health insurance, the learning common, C T E, uh, uh, that's a story.
That's a story, that's what I need to help with. Being the numbers, to be able to talk about.
So you, you don't, you don't see it in the, but you need to see it on a picture, because. Those of us who are accountants understand looking at the budget, but when you don't have that background, you might not. I'll be able to quantify it the same way I see it in my head, so that's why, I know what you're getting at.
There's probably eleven thousand five hundred people down in March. And I think everybody, everybody always says, I can play, like. Uh, if you can't articulate what you're, what you're supporting.
Okay.
Right, at least for certain.
All right, are we, are we on the budget for that, or? Yeah, did you, I'm done, okay. Are there any other questions for it now, I know there's more finance committee meeting coming up, and we're also gonna have a workshop, and I don't have the date off the top of my head, I know you showed it. On the calendar, it's a presentation, uh, which hopefully, you know, with finance committee, it does.
It's optional, um, it's November twenty.
All right, all right. Vehicle plate.
So, real, real quick, um. This has to do with, um, Mike's meeting with Butler on this week, or last week, I forget, we did it. Um, I understand how can we be, uh, by the services officially and effectively in this environment, where we do have a drive shortening. Um, two years ago, there was two vans purchased, um, one for special services, one for athletics, those were twelve passenger, and then the year before that, there was one for special services. And, um, the, moving from a charter to vans, um, was very beneficial, when we grabbed some structural time, it was like, one team could leave. Not have everybody leave, like one team could leave later, um, much more efficient, and so this year, for example, uh, we have a four runs going down to the C T, like that. But if we borrow the C T from athletics, so there's a concern when it's, when the, when the, um, van is going to go, leaving at noon. How do we manage a C T run, because our special Ed vans are during the day, are going to work sites and going to community aid, so we can be able to enable it. We also, another van, um, with two athletic vans, that we could now take up to twenty four people by vans, a coach and an assistant coach, and thereby getting very good chart. Which saves us money, it's cheaper for us to take the vans than it is to do a charter, plus charters are less available. Um, and so. And you can't get them last minute, and it's a lot of frustration for this community, um, the people in the community who are trying to get, obviously, deliver their service. Um, so originally, in full transparency, when this was put on the agenda early, a year, a while ago, it was almost a year notice for van. And, and so I'm trying to put it on now, and then talking about putting an order in now, so we have it in a year, but the sense of urgency has gone a little bit, because the supply lines and supply chains are better. We could put an order in and expect to get a van in three to six. Okay, so when I originally started this discussion, Mike and Amy and everybody to here, that's why I had a sense of urgency in stone, because now, you know what I mean, we have it for you. But, so what we'd like to do is, but, uh, it's one of our under, un, designated fund balance project, six month out, and all year twelve thousand to three. We'd like to, because three to six months, uh, obviously, ordering, you don't need to, wouldn't order this, and we, we don't wanna take delivery until after July, anything, that's right, that's what we do, it's fund balance of this fiscal, you know, the project next fiscal. Um, so if the board wanted to, we can wait and see what happened in March, see, probably order right after that, like March fifteenth, April fifteenth, May, June, we can get very close to the end, or maybe a little bit earlier. But if you wanted to put an order in now, or whenever, with the three to six months, there's no cancellation. So there's no risk, if things went, you know, the budget went funky, or things happened that we didn't feel that community priority for the fund balance, we could cancel, no fee. Um, so we're also, in full transparency, having the same conversation, with the, hoping that the Amherst school did purchases. Uh, for the same reasons, this year, and Kelly did the synergy, um, Amherst has borrowed a high school van, had a building, it, it, glass and all that, but it worked out. But the volleyball team, they have, and, so, true, so if we got a van in one, in Amherst, one year, we needed to share, that fills capacity for both, because of Kelly and Tony, and that relationship was just probably. Obviously, the van would have, you know, that's right, in front of each district, but there was indication this time, was how we get the data van, and then we, and the coach, and we helped each other. So what we'd like to, it's about sixty one thousand dollars, um. People need, that's in the past, all wheel drives, that's a search, and there's a rear wheel drive, and that's, you know, for all wheel drive, it's, it's rough enough, from twelve kids in the military. For the volleyball, it's dark, it's on the way back, I think we prefer all wheel drive. And so it's really up to the, so we'd like to expand the outing fund balance, like to put the order in, so we can have a three to six month delivery, so we can have that school next year. Because then C T can have a designated one, um, you know, for most days, plus we can coddle two vans together to. Plus, we can coddle two vans together, twenty-four kids can actually take an entire soccer team and not have a charter. That was way too long explanation, I apologize. Twelve, so, the twelves.
And they save us, we can already have saved us money, significant money in, in the budget.
Better service, more flexibility, efficient cost saving.
You need a motion or a question, a motion and then discuss. I would make a motion that we do that, and if we were it now, as long as we can cancel it, if not approved by others, but that way we get in the queue with. You know, don't have to worry about, and then, and we, there are other sports that start right before this starts, and we might need things.
You're making a motion, we need a second for.
So this, this is not a.
And, and second.
But if there's no voter, then it's just you.
Okay, so.
Your project, so, so the motion, did you get the motion today? The motion is to purchase a, a twelve thousand gallon van for approximately sixty-one K, have on the side of the van. And if available, if available, and, and so. Alright, discussion.
I have a reaction to that, I principally, I don't like vote on stuff, and I just learned about it for the first time, so sure, I'll do that. It's not an exigent circumstance.
I have a strong feeling about putting on this one there.
Um, yeah, but I'd like to see, if somebody has voted on it in January, six month, beginning of this year, plenty of time based on your estimates. And would you, if you were, maybe whoever in your office, could put together a pie sheet that says, this is how much money each van saves us. And boy, wave that around, post that on our Facebook page, sure would be a lot easier to vote in favor of that, with that coming to the system.
Sure, and I can ask Kelly, um, to do it, um, I can also, like, the difference between a CTE charge, that was, well, we had that, that was hundreds of, right?
Oh, yeah.
We had the CTE once budget, and we went down to seventy-five.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah, we can, I'm sorry, we can do that.
Yes, there's, that's, that's the business case, that's like, oh, people, oh, we're spending money, you don't even know if you have. No, 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 it's like, well, look, this is, this is, this is, save us hundreds of thousands, whatever that number is, it's no rare, clearly it's no rare, I do actually believe that's true, not downing it. Boy, see it, invite it, land, have it out there to public sphere, just be making it a lot easier, I don't think we would support that.
And just to be clear on the motion, we are not spending money, and if we don't know, we're going to be having, already the motion included, that we would not spend it if we did not have.
Right, I think this is fine, you can do, do, it's just a why, because, because viability, because stability, and transportation, not dependent on. Service.
Yep.
Travel that rates. I'd like by sixteen. Plus, that's your product.
See driver, I don't.
Yeah, and we, so we will.
Add a dress. All the motion and say that we will address it in the year we're in.
No problem, and, and to be full transparency, I started this, this really, cause I thought it was going to be.
Yeah.
Supply chain has changed a hundred and last three weeks.
But, yeah, I knew before there was a, a some chart before we saw about the costs, and but, yeah, we could do this, like, we know CTE products, you can schedule out, we can also say, here is what we use the transportation for for athletics, instead of using a Butler, and here's the.
Kelly did it our first year.
Yeah.
Our first year that we had to double, and we used a Kelly to do the cost, and I walked in, we're obvious at one point, it would save thirty thousand dollars on that.
It was in our, yeah, the debtback.
Yeah, so we have done it.
Yeah.
Well, updated.
Yeah, and then, would you prefer to cover the budget?
Two months is fine, yeah, we did, honestly, we did, we needed September one.
Okay. Just a feedback, you know, you're only bringing it out now because you thought it was here, see, you should bring it up now, even in the six months, because, because, or, or you just pussy here, or whatever, even in this shorter period of time, because now we think about it, nobody can mock, we do that, it'll be the right thing. We're working together looking.
I, I guess, I.
Yeah, because it broke for.
No, I'm with you, and I had, I guess I had a lot of urgency in our class, I wanted to get it in.
Then you can get it, no problem, early on.
Alright, so.
I just, I had more, I could literally accept it, like, something.
Can I get more chat?
Annex Science Labs.
So, um, just to, just to where we are, I, um, I think the last meeting or previous meeting, I did, uh, talk about wherever, so, when the board, um. Did voted to, and I don't know exactly the language, but when, when the preschool in the seventh and eighth grade, or at least not supporting it before we started, and then right after that, we had a meeting with the N E S commission, if this is familiar. Because, um, there was questions about our science. Um, from that meeting, Dana and I attended it with admission, we toured with the commission, talked with Eric Poskett, talked with lots of people. And started taking a look at what could be do now, forward on, um, ameliorating a concern by teachers and through the accreditation process. Uh, understanding that in S A U thirty-nine number of communities, there are not, there are facility concerns and projects and studies going on in the entire community, so what could be do to do this? Um, and, um, we also toured with, uh, with the Roger Finance, right, your first day we toured, we looked at the Annex Science Labs early in that tour. And also toured with a couple of board members, live in person, when we saw actually them being used, so, um. Part of this is we have a perfect, appropriately sized and designed space for physics, appropriately designed space, um, or chemistry, uh, in this, uh, in main building. And then we look at the life science with the dissection lab, or that, it is not an appropriately designed space for the activity as well as for the number of students. Um, so, um, what, and talking with, with the science teacher, taking a look at the N E S report, what we think, and after the discussion with Representative T S, we think. A light renovation to the science labs, changing counter space, changing location of gap, um, and heavy renovation. Uh, two classrooms into a specifically designed science lab, will be cost effective and education sound to meet the needs, programmatic needs going forward. Um, so what we'd like to do is, um, use the impact fee process to fund a, uh, facility. Design in costing of light renovation of science labs at the Annex, heavy renovation, creating a, um, dissection, like appropriately sized, um, life science lab. And, um, use the impact fees, put out to bid, find an architect and, um, engineering firm. To design that cost, a firm, construction manager, firm deposit, so that eventually we could look at how much it would cost to do this. And then work with this, how even proper school board to figure out the best financing approach. Is it, say, for example, it comes in that we can do, we need to do three hundred thousand. So do we simply save, like, right, two, two years for four, or three years for three? Um, and figure out how to finance, or you can do, do a bond, not, right, but step one, needing, I believe. The basis of the N E S report, based on the principle, based on the, the, the size domain need, based on the commission, based on everything that there is needed, and it's demonstrated a couple of years ago when I got here. But I think a different approach, a more conservative approach, can still meet the needs according to our experts in the field, this is our science book. So to begin this process, you have charged a business administrator, wrapping a letter to the selectmen to accessing that fees, up to Roger things, up to.
Well, the amount that's available to voting in, um, last night, I had a conversation with the finance manager, um, the ninety thousand dollars.
So up to ninety thousand dollars for the design, uh, architectural engineering design and costing of, of science renovation left in Annex. Let's start that.
Couple of questions. One, when I understand the impact fees, these are here, they're going to even or lose them, or they're going to go back to, eventually they go back to the developers who are.
Six years, yeah.
So it's not costing any additional funds, or something that was already funded in from people that were developing, and they're collecting specifically for categories, that's like. The schools, yeah, but, um. Two, so the, the one lab is in the Annex, when we talk about paying two classrooms and combining them and making another lab, would that also be in the Annex?
Yes.
Or, okay, you're right next to the other, ten labs in one. Okay, so stay tuned, I mean, we're not.
It's two, whatever two, whatever two the architect says is better, cause they are different size, so in my gut, you keep the biggest rooms. And then you take the two smallest that are next to each other, cause they're, they're cheating with me?
Yeah.
Cause I want to save the biggest room that we can.
Right, and all, and the only thing I'm thinking is that, when we're talking about like the use analysis over there, and things like when we make the space over. Uh, I mean, it's going to take a while, obviously, to see if we get funds, to get someone to make a bid, but we need to. Think that needs to be looked at and part of the piece, right, because it would be incredibly unfortunate to go through and plan on these two rooms in this location, and then be like, yeah, the perfect thing would have been to put bench space right there, but now it's right next to the lab, and now it's really loud, and now it's under work, and. If we put it on the split floor instead, or whatever, you know, just so, um, I do think we just need to be cognizant of, we, I think it's a great idea to do, and I think we do need to get our head wrapped around what would that cost be and what, how can it be done? Uh, I think those are the perfect way to do it, we just need to be. Not for closing options over there, uh, or making it more difficult to make use of space over there that could otherwise be free out, or something else.
I'm just curious, make sure that we, those are our best rules for that, I, I have some presentation about any labs that are on site for us. Especially the cash lab or a class. Kind of was it. Airboard for, it's low, not getting it out of the room, not dying on the windows, so. It's, it's exciting for, uh, the best place where they look at. It's below, that would be, that's place.
I mean, we, we, there are no, there is no current, there are no science labs on the first floor right now, so we'd be looking at taking groups that are on the first floor right now, enter them into science labs. What is on the first floor right now is our, like, humanities, the, the wall and the dividers, so they can pull them, so. We're trying, I think, for what we're trying to do with this project is limit the scope as much as possible, and that might be, that might, yeah, of course we can do it, but it just might expand.
I'm just curious, the architect, where we, I, to look at, what their thoughts would be on it, fair.
And we prefer better space here.
Yeah.
The main building.
Space in this will maybe better for. Schools and I would do that, last one to first floor, that, that access, ground level right out, so. If it gets adoring, from the other way.
We've come full circle on space, but that way.
Yeah.
Yeah, glad you're about to, it's yet another idea on the table, and you can just, a little correction, this, so you didn't say that. Something in the gray was on the table, so we weren't talking about it, it's others who were here.
And that's why I tried to be very careful in how I described that when I introduced this, I understood the sensitivity, and I don't, I think I missed the mark, there was an attempt to try, you know, relatively. I did have a pregnant paw, that's what it was all about, trying to figure that out. But yes.
Yeah, we, we can't put off. In this stage, it's a fine. Do a reality. This process, at the moment, that, that way.
Well, the, the one thing I think, I mean, I've been around these science labs for a while, and kind of involved in the original thought process of the science labs, and. When the N E S came back, and when I'm told that they, we have too many students in the classroom, maybe, I don't say maybe, but maybe. Square foot per student, we have too many students in these classes, and they're wanting to take these classes, I want to provide the appropriate space that's safe for these students. Because if they want to take classes, I want to make sure they're in the right space, safe. So I, I do want to move on these, um. Again, these multiple different fragrations, I can be part of the whole, and he caused it, but I am a huge supporter of what he put.
And the architect will meet with, and the board of the scope, um, the study, of the design, so. This just gets us started to up to eighty thousand dollars, sorry, what was it? And start the process, and Roger and I, and Mike have talked about, because, um, really better, find an architect maybe who is specialized in science or makership. Not necessarily someone who's working with us now, because there isn't, you know, there is a architect who does lots of work in Amherst, but that's a lot of work, you know what I mean, they want to actually, that. Just to start this and have a meeting about the study with chosen architect, with, with everything that people said is perfectly valid, but on their table. And use their expertise, look at what is the best way, what we know is we have a deficiency in science, we have some other impossible uses. And we don't have a space specifically designed for that, I mean, and that's important, um, and I, that's exciting to me, it's exciting to Eric, exciting, you know, we saw the.
Teachers.
Jenny and, and, right, and Julianne, that, that, we honor that science as we have the others. Because it isn't different, it's different, different storage, different, um, organization, and designed specifically for it, and, and, you know. And just to start, and this is a process, especially, we and I, and Mike, Roger, Amy and I recommend, that we do put it up to bid and hire the right architect for this project, to work with this board, this school, these people. And that, so it's going to take some time, it's, I'll be fairly honest, it's not a March of twenty-four. Because it's a six week in R F P process, that we just didn't R F P, didn't on burden, for their stuff. Very similar process, there is this science lab, there's, there's looking at preschool, they're looking at expansion for enrollment, and they're looking at the seventh, eighth grade issue. And we're looking with that architect, that, uh, R F P closes next week, um, then we put it out for weeks, whatever Roger does, you know, this project. But we would very much like to start this process and, and meet some of the, fix the deficiencies that we know, now that we have. On the, I think, big progress, and to do it in a way that respects the taxpayer and the entire community, with a, I think, we're huge conservative board, that was. We'd like to start, we can start this, and Amy wrote the letter.
So, first, we need the board to make a motion to, um, to approve the request to ask for the collection for these funds. So you'll need, oh, sorry, so you'll need to do that, then, um, I have a, the Amherst will do it together, so we have a, a process. And then I have a letter that, um, I crafted for the board chair, to send to the board of selection, and we need to get it on their agenda, which is every other week on Mondays. And, um, I went to the meeting for Amherst and, um, stepped in, we can go as well, then we can go and present the project, and they vote, um, to approve. The funding, and then we can go forward, and then it works as a reimbursement, but we sent them in voice, and we get reimbursement. One interesting caveat with Bowhegan is that. The, we're, we're eligible for ninety thousand dollars, so, say, say we end up spending, um, that. Right, so we can only receive reimbursement for whatever the, um, appropriations that, that we determined, the split between Amherst, town of Amherst and Montford. So the town of Amherst isn't going to give, uh, it isn't going to give, it's going to be in the school district, funds that would be associated with town of Montford. So.
We're going to go with fifty thousand.
So they're not going to pay for fifty thousand, they're going to say, oh, pardon, so the proportion that, that we use is, uh, is, it's about eighty-five percent, fifty percent, which is the, the tax, the tax split. Uh, so, so say we spent a hundred thousand dollars, we're going to get reimbursed from, from impact fees for eighty-five thousand, and fifteen thousand will have to be funded, um, as a budget.
Does Montford have impact fee? The town, that, that, I don't know, I don't know.
That's something to check on, we could, you know, if they got a fund sitting there, that they're allowed to access also for that. If one of these, like, the Montford, it's not a, that's great.
All true, it's a round.
So, so tonight we're looking for the.
Up to ninety thousand.
For the approval of, to, approval of. To approve of this reported request, of course.
Yeah. Alright, so let's, let's take a motion a second, we can have more discussion. Motion by John, second by Dan, Vincent, Andy, guys. Alright, is any other discussion?
Yeah, just say, um. You know, this is compelling. The service, we can, I know, but. Very important to really study. Usually, I mean, it doesn't include us, um, because of other things with our space, so I should really that. It's a research base, any larger space. Um, and it makes less. Yeah, the dance, I mean, there's something in the, uh, ground floor or. Name the building, space, whatever, that, that makes more sense for that, I mean, definitely not, just assume that is that, I don't know, maybe, but. It makes a less, it's a major slide. Cool, and one other thing about, um, is it, this comes back to my question earlier about the maintenance on the capital. Capital maintenance, maybe on the line. Um, and we see, we see that every year with a number, currently that number is based on our, um, penis. Theoretically, we could see that with extra, in anticipation of some solution coming down the wire. And, and we don't have to ask, we know it's not gonna be. Less than two hundred thousand dollars in time, it'll be less than four hundred thousand dollars, so we can start saving that initial project. Strike those costs that long term, if we wanted to do that. And I think, say that now, maybe without that, that would be just, I mean.
I, I don't think that, my priority doesn't, what, first, uh, first delivery, if I was just a, in a supply standard, the very first point, I mean, it wasn't signed, that was just. Separate or an article, wasn't it to save money?
Just start saving money, and we were, it was going to be up to like, at the time, it was like one point, one point, two million dollars, and we were trying to save it for three or four years.
Right, and that was a separate article, two, that was a separate one.
Yes.
As opposed, so there might have been a reason why they didn't cobble together, like, you mean? And I don't know that, maybe if you look at it.
Well, there was a reason.
We want to keep it separate.
Wanted it not to be responded by a friction, the boiler that's.
Yes.
So I had some, we replace.
Right, so just consider, but it has a specific purpose, we can actually do projects with funds available.
We want people to vote on that particular project, and not going into our capital management project.
Is anyone?
And that's another choice.
Right.
It was good. That is not, I don't, no. If someone's like.
Well, there's nothing stopping us from seeing a renovation style and fund. Now, so that.
I think we want to make sure there's, there's. What that cost is, well, we want to make sure about that, we want to make sure that we understand the cost is because. It turns into enough that it needs to be a bond, you don't want to start saving money. You can't, yeah, I mean, it just.
Typically, like to know what they're buying.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. The letter.
My, my concern is that. It takes a year to do the study, it takes two years to build, now, all other generations of students come through the high school, they're not gonna be worried about it. So, if we, we can push the gas a little bit and save it here, I mean, that would be amazing.
And I appreciate you doing this.
Alright, any other discussion, I will take a vote. Or, take a vote, those in favor of the motion. And that's the five, five all. Thank you. Um, okay, the, the, is it possible for me to make a few comments about the budget?
Yes, yes, yeah, so you can manage to make one up, sorry. Guys brought up a lot of different topics, and that you haven't heard, that's finance we have not heard yet, right? Um. A couple things, I, I think if, if I were to, oh, sorry. I think if I were to call the, um. The committee, I, which, I mean, I can't speak to them without doing that. Um, I think we would find strong support for, um, the annex renovation. Um, we all toured it, and, um, I think Steve made a good case, um, for. Improving at least the biology lab, because right now it's a disaster, and if anything, you have actually seen. Um, and seen the gas jets right up against the wall, it's horrifying, um, so, um. I, I guess my, my other, um, take on this, that. Because you said it, it was flagged by the S, is that correct? Um, it's, it's become something that's a need, not a want, and. You know, I guess, as a board, you all have to figure out whether your philosophy is to put needs into the budget. Or have voter, it may have to be a voter's person, so, um. That's, that's a philosophy that you'll have to apply, but, um, I think when things become. Flag for, um. Certification, then I think we, we put ourselves in a different spot, so, um, that's, that's it, um, as far as, um. I had a question about, um, buying trailers. Um, I know when, um, we met with, uh, Roger, and he talked about, um, leasing these vast trailers. That we've had for thirty years out here. Um, Steve mentioned the fact that you could possibly, um, buy used trailers, and it'd save us a lot of money, um, rather than leasing. What we've got out there, so I just didn't know if that was a discussion that's been had by anybody, and wondered if you might. Think about it. Yeah, please.
Um, it's, yeah, so we have a lease for the end of the school year.
Yeah.
And, um, Roger, it is on his cue to look at different financing scheme, and it's.
Okay.
It could be as simple as they just will surrender.
Surrender.
Because they don't want to toss their money to.
No, they won't.
Right, so maybe as simple as that, and that's what's happened in other places where it's cheap for the company not to come. Take it, because there's no use for it, so, but, um, yeah, Roger, he is on his radar to figure out the best cost effective way to have its conversion in the community.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, the other thing I had to comment on was the, um, the CIP, um. I saw that it was, you know, among the agenda items, and, um, I'm just curious, always, um. Fascinated me, is what actually happens to the CIP? I mean, everybody puts in their wish list, um, you know, what we want for Christmas, and. And I don't know what happens, I mean, do you guys ever, like. Need the, the other boards and selectmen to try and hash out, you know, who comes first, and. What priorities there are, I mean, does someone actually establish these priorities?
Yeah, each, uh, or if any. Um, C I P committee.
Right.
Now, maybe it's also on the committee. Um, and. We all hear the presentations from all departments in town, um, and it's up to. The board of selection how to prioritize those requests. Um, but they will. They, they don't really have any say over what happens. Other students are still. But they will prioritize theirs, uh, uh, around ours, as well, that they get into account. Um, you know, they're, we, we probably need to do communication center, maybe with that, or, or, if they have something big that was a high priority, they might ask us. Right now, they don't, they realize the school. Tell them this school is a high priority. They've, I've been on it two years, so, kind of working around that, there is a point where if they had a couple things. Be done, no matter what we do in the school, so, you know, maybe a couple of things on that.
I think, you know, and obviously, our, our concern is, um, the taxpayer and the burden, and I'm just hoping that, um. Actual coordination takes place, that it's not just the documents that's on the shelf.
Yes, we all have, how, how to prioritize, and, um, the. Like I said, that's what's often has, we all can say over how they prioritize the. The projects that are, other than towns project.
Yeah.
They don't have a say over us, so we, they kind of prioritize knowing that we're coming in for the bond, Amherst, this region's coming into the bond. Anything that wasn't included already will be included in the next year, so if we're talking about it now, it, it's not gonna make this year's C I P, so.
It, I would call it almost like a gentleman's agreement, you know, it's, we know it's there, and we need to, I think, be kind of above all, right? We need, if we choose to change or, like, where this chem, this chemistry lab idea has not been brought forward to them, they don't know about it.
Right.
I think we need to also think of what's going on around the town, um, but then also priority needs. You know, I, we worry about our students, and that, you know, might need to go to the town and say, I'm sorry, you didn't put this in because we absolutely have to put that in. Will they hear about it? Yeah, I think they should hear about it, but it's.
Well, I think, I think that was one of the criticisms, uh, the last, you know, election was, you know. Are we talking to each other, are we coordinating ideas on, on these things, maybe not, they. That's all I know, the. Okay.
It, yeah, the process this year is over, or, you know, before the slide, it presented. How, how do we, I meant, set our priorities, and what we do is.
Okay, um, and then the final thing is, is sort of the foundation for, um, getting a budget passed, and that is communication, so I encourage you. To, um, to really follow through with your commitment to, um, communicating with the public. And knowing you'll figure out a way to do it, so that, um, it's not messy, um, but I, I cannot emphasize enough how important it is. Um, just to get, you know, to notify the public of what you're talking about, what you're thinking about, and. It's way in advance of the election, because there's nothing worse than people trying to weigh in at the last minute. So I, I really highly encourage you to pursue that. Thank you very much, appreciate that, thanks.
Okay. We, we do some. Nothing, I guess, okay. Alright, four goals, um, I want to present what we put in last year, and knowing that we're in November now, is make sure that. If whatever we just got tonight is something that's actually something that's achieved, and we'll get during the year. But last year, we had communication for the board of presidents, communication with the community at large. So we took a community chat sessions and stuff, um, I don't really want, and continue a communication line with the idea of trying to reach out to. Probably in a different manner, which we just said earlier. Uh, so we could potentially keep that as one of the board goals, and we could keep trying to improve our communication in different manners. Um, what we had last year was instruction time, the board was set instructional time for priority, long-term teams, focus, I've been all the people person. Uh, that, I mean, that one. Is that one we want to continue, uh, looking at and observing, and making sure that we're making the best use of all of our time, and. We could continue that one, and keep it as part of our conversation, and work into an agenda, as a thought. The third goal, um, the board of presidents are understanding was the aspiration of talk for it was. Last year, that's where we had the professors come in, and they're talking through each of the curriculum pieces, so we really went through, I, I thought. Thorough understanding of where we are today, so I'm not sure that goal really applies at this point.
I'm not, I feel we keep hearing about some of the other new things, like, I know there's a, uh. Unified cooking class. Was telling me about that, and that's new, we haven't done that before, I mean, I would, I would love to just get little updates around the unified. About, it's about, I mean, we're doing some of the, you know, replacing the main schools, the main, the main areas, but maybe some of the, um. More off, unified arts.
Offbeat have programs, we just want to make sure unified arts, like unified cooking is a different thing than unified.
Yeah, I, I'm thinking like, any of those, you know, like those.
It's like, those things, you can have some of the like.
Different like this, some of that, right, I mean, just, I was just thinking, you know, and we looked at like, what's happening with the math, there's a bit hole, sign is a hole, but some of these, some of the, the smaller programs, I think that. Love just get a little bit of that.
Programs.
Yes.
Sports, yes. But that's, I don't, I don't.
And I think along that same lines, and we hit on it a little bit earlier, is looking at our program of studies. That will be coming forward to make sure that we understand that we're providing, uh. Not with appropriate, cool, well-rounded. But appropriately. Uh, just found, but, you know, with that. Concept of our program of studies is thorough, I don't, we're right wording on it, but it falls under a curriculum. Content.
I think if we operate class, which, you know, high level figure, you know, high standardized, but, uh. Like, you know, and it really be demonstrated that it, it is. It ain't, it won't, or, or, I mean, it's that it is, it's, 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 it's not, and, and we shouldn't be operating it. Because we need to, we need to think that. There's other reasons, maybe we can discuss the laws in other ways, as you put those comments, but. Yeah, and I would like to also hear from the programs, and also hear from programs that heard that again, to see how things that we've heard are going. You know, we heard about some challenges in programs, so, some updates would be nice, I, that would be, that was one of the, we did this thing. What I understand, it used to be common practice, board members to have conversations with. With faculty, staff, members, and team. That doesn't happen since then, I mean, that's, that, that was the reason last year, to have the teachers who could present to us was perfect. To actually get a window and be able to have a conversation that could be about, I hope their experience is like magic. And I miss this year, so I would like to see that be a regular, or business part.
It doesn't have to be huge, I mean, it doesn't have to be like, especially for everybody's elected, or a new program that's been rolled out, or something like that, you know, it could be. You know, but, but they don't have to go all the giant, our boy, or anything, if they want to, that's great too, but they don't have to, we just some pop goes, what was it again?
Dana and I have the pleasure of observing, uh. John, at the convention course. And I've been out, you know, we did some development work, and get a chance to see, I would love to have you, you know, in the experience, where we had. American students, German students getting together, um, working together to get across the, to get the.
Voyager elements.
Voyager, you get a thing, thing for that, you get a thing, thing.
Maybe we should have John take it all out, and they should do it, I think.
But, so, so, some of those types, we do the main, right, we do core lunch, you're all good, it's important, but maybe some electives, maybe some of that. Good short, it's been like John, it's show, it's video of the venture, the new one?
No, no, not that, not the new, new one, like, our girls casted, I was out there. No, I would love that.
But, on, we can wait for Mike, on, Nate on that, have some, and, and the unified arts, we use a part for corporate, for corporate. Die group, unified support.
So right now, I, I kind of have the three, the communication instruction time and the curriculum. Is there something else people are interested in, or go straight to me, or something you can achieve and. Do this year, and I'd love to revisit this more in April timeframe, and not wait till we get through here, which is definitely my fault to be, I don't, we did have a lot going. But, um, I would like to make a priority that happens with people, and, and people numbers are sad, so, you know, going forward into the career, or, and.
You want me to look at, um, scheduling some chat sessions, listening sessions in January and February, just maybe like on a evening, and a Saturday morning, if the library is here in Montford. We did that in January and February, that would be a chance for people to.
Yes.
We do, we do, we can, we can see them to come in.
Yeah, we can, yeah, I'm happy to help, we did too.
And I can reach out to Swiss Val, and then just put like.
And then, who can, we can get it, because it's basically their, right, yeah, okay. Um, we want to add a board like our facilities, to support any facility that was finalized to the science lab, and we want to put that as a goal.
You go.
Yeah, there are some things made that we have to do.
Yeah, like you have to do.
But it's not so much. But also, everyone.
The goal is more the, it's not the aspirational, but, but, yeah, the private. If we, if we don't. Right, I have added a fellow card, great, well, okay.
Perfect, perfect.
Best.
Thank you for doing that. My, my share. Um, are we good with those three?
Yeah.
Yes, Amy, I have the answer to the, uh, the thing. Yes, so, in March of two thousand and five, Article three, shall the school district vote to create an expendable trust fund? Under the conditions are said, blah, blah. Under the provisions are stated blah blah, to be held by a trustee for the purpose of repairing and maintaining school facilities and equipment. And for capital.
Nice, awesome.
Alright, um. Yeah, we need a motion and we need to do it on. It's a change from the start and time and curriculum, if you do the three topics, I don't have exact perfect.
We can work on that.
You want to do a couple next month with that.
No, I, I'm okay with the deep. Including in location. This Facebook experiment is part of that, you know, maybe we did. Somewhere, I think it's a sexy job over here, where taking feedback from public comment and incorporating that. To be back to be part of here on Facebook, but it's never even necessarily expected.
And if we're meeting in public, at the library, something for that other communication, but it's like.
Right, people will be coming up with some ideas that's fit, a broad topic to discuss.
So we have a motion and a. So, do they, are you okay with those three subjects?
So I don't have those four goals.
It's communication, instruction time and curriculum. Yeah, I need to brush.
We, I think we should work on work from here.
I, I think we should say we're, we're going to confirm our goals the next meeting.
Okay.
I think we had, yeah.
Okay. We'll write up. Alright, we'll write up a little thing and we'll. Approve that.
Yeah, I'd like to. Alright, so we're gonna look forward and we'll get some action. Words written on it.
For that, if you please to certainly.
I'll make this pop right now.
I guess, as required.
Right. Um, what input, two oh two.
Two people.
Okay, I, I want to online, if you're online, please raise your hand as we will. Do you have any questions? Alright, we are going to close public comments. And can I have a motion to go into non-public under RSA ninety one eight three two. See and. And I will make that. And I guess everybody, roll call vote. Actually, determine a, okay. You just run yet.